Can you guys hear me? My video isn't working.
Yes, we can.
You can, okay. Sorry about that. Motion to open the meeting. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, roll call. Trustee Lanfear. Lilly, we can't hear you. You're muted.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Lanfear, I.
Trustee Liken?
I.
Trustee Stetser?
I.
Trustee Keating?
I.
Mayor Plummer?
I.
Motion passes.
Does anybody have a conflict of interest or any disclosure regarding the agenda item?
Lanfear, I do not.
Anybody else?
Like I do not.
Stetser, I do not.
Keating, I do not.
And Plummer, I do not. Hang on, I'm just seeing if I can get the video. Oh, there we go.
There you are.
Okay, here I am. Okay. Dorothea, would you please read the open meeting compliance certification?
Okay. The public will have opportunities to comment on specific agenda items when they occur in the meeting and also general matters at the end of the meeting. Speakers cannot comment once, here we go, speakers can comment once in each comment window on a specific agenda item. It is not debate, deposition, or panel discussion. Speakers must step to the front of the room. We don't need that one. If attendee is participating via web conference technology such as Zoom, the clerk will announce how attendees should signal if they wish to comment. This may differ per platform, but is typically accomplished by the raise your hand feature, which we are using today. Speakers must give their name, address, and organization. There being exemption for any category of people protected by New York state law. Speakers must be recognized by the presiding officer. Speakers must limit their remarks to three minutes on any given topic. Speakers may not yield any remaining time they may have to another speaker. Board members may, with permission of the mayor, only interrupt a speaker during their remarks for the purpose of clarification or information. Speakers must observe commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste. Interested parties or the representatives may address the board by written communications to the Village Clerk at villagepittsburgh.com. All written communications will become part of the public record and will be attached to the minutes for that meeting. At the center's request, written communications will be read aloud by the clerk at the meeting and will adhere to the three-minute time limit. If printed materials or other media are provided by attendees during the meeting, they must be submitted to the village board with optional distribution to audience members. All materials will be part of the public record. Private distribution of materials to audience members only is prohibited. There you go.
Thank you. Okay, we have a single item on our agenda today. We did receive an RFP response. And I believe all the board members who received this had a chance to take a look at it. And Scott, you're here.
He's here and I'm just promoting him up to panelist right now.
Okay. And I think Zach is going to tune in too, in case there's additional questions he could answer, if the board has any.
Here comes Scott.
Great. Hi, Scott. He's muted.
I have no questions. It's all clear.
Okay. Yeah, you know, I think it's fairly straightforward in terms of prior discussions that we've had. Yes, Lilly?
I can wait until you finish your statement, Mayor.
No, I just, you know, Scott also may want to add some things in as we move forward. We've been going back and forth on a couple of things as well, just in terms of the number of responses and sort of the economic climate that's out there. So Lilly, if you had a question, why don't we start with you?
I do, thank you. I do appreciate very much Scott's letter because that did clarify some concerns that I had. And he makes very excellent points. But to that statement that he has sent us, I would like to also add the following. I did have a conversation with a professional consultant, and although they were not included as part of the RFP bidders, they shared some information with me because I did, as I said, have some concerns. And that these were the following, that the format of the RFP did not make the intent or the scope entirely clear. That the 2019 master plan was not clearly stated as the reference document. And if the village needs, which is the term that was used in the cover letter, are those of the master plan, that was unclear as well. The project location and extents were not identified, and the master plan clearly illustrates a number of zones. But this identifier is not mentioned. The extents are poorly shown as the canal only. Was there a walkthrough, site inspection, and explanation offered for all bidders who attended? There are pretty typical legal requirements for public bidding, and an addition statement of deliverables were not included. The text mentions attached documents, but there's no list, and while it's impossible to make assumptions about which pages or attachments, they're not identified. There was no mention of ownership, private or public, in the project area. And no requirement was indicated for import from other boards other than the trustees. So those were a few of the concerns that were expressed as to why a consultant might not give the village a bid on such a short runway. And I would also remind the board that at least six months ago and possibly longer, we were presented with the opportunity from the same firm who had submitted this RFP to give us a presentation, which indicated to me that they have been aware and had information regarding the project, the potential project, and at least the concept. Because it was indicated at the meeting that both the mayor and the trustee had spoken to this firm and at least had conversations that the other firms, consultant firms, were not privy to. So I think they may have had a longer runway. I'm suggesting they might have had a longer runway to which to perfect a little bit more of an RFP response. That is my statement. Thank you.
Yes, Dan.
I think that's an outrageous statement at the end. I think you're making an accusation based on nothing.
What accusation was I making, Dan?
That they had a longer runway based on conversations with other trustees. I think that's outrageous. I think you're accusing other trustees of impropriety. It's outrageous.
No, it wasn't an accusation. It was a statement made and an agenda item on our agenda six months ago. It was on our agenda. I can provide that, so.
Yeah, and I think maybe, you know, if I could just chime in a bit, I think, you know, maybe as all the board members may recall, is that I had been invited by the Director of Development for Fairport because they were finishing up a major waterfront project to take a look at their project. And Dan, I think you were invited along on that as well. And so that was a result of talking to, in this instance, this particular firm who had done some work on that project. So that's what, because they had done Fairport, I thought it'd be good for us to start taking a look at some of this.
Yeah, that is doing the job. That is taking a look at what's going on in other communities. The connection that you tried to make of that being giving, the word you used was a longer ramp to the applicant, I think is outrageous, and I firmly stand against it.
Yeah, I mean, I think the context of how that firm came before the board was based on what the work that they had done in Fairport because it was such a significant project. Yes, Justin, you had your hand up.
Yeah, thank you. I wanted to support, first of all, Trustee Lanfear's comments. I appreciate those. I also see the RFP as extremely problematic. And I wanted to call attention to the urgency with which this is being pushed through. We are all here at noon at a special meeting, which essentially excludes a lot of the public in order to get this done in time. We have a RFP that was extended for two weeks. It was issued on June 24th and due on July 8th. And we only received one response, which honestly is more than I expected. And I think that Trustee Lanfear's comments that perhaps a certain vendor had a special window into what may have been sought here is pertinent.
I think that's outrageous.
I also mentioned in an email to the board that I was concerned about. Dan, I have the floor.
Please let Justin finish, Dan. Thank you.
And then I'd like to respond to your outrageous accusations. Thank you. When you're done, I'd like to respond to your outrageous accusations. Thank you.
Justin, please continue.
Thank you. Since Dan chimed in, I wanted to call attention to his email response when I mentioned the urgency about this. He said, "We all wish we could have a lot of time to do this, but the deadlines were set by the state, and there is significant time pressure. We have no control over the due dates. I, for one, want to do all that we can to secure funding for Shane Place development in an open and transparent manner." I think that this process is anything but open and transparent. And to Dan's comment that we have nothing that we could do about this, that is just blatantly absurd. This is like a student saying that when they have a year to complete an assignment, they can't do it because they're up against the deadline. This is one of the most predictable grants that are issued by the state, and we have had perhaps a year to do our homework on this, and we did not. So now we're calling a special meeting. We've given two weeks for vendors to respond to a complex RFP, which is very poorly defined. We've only gotten one response, and now we're calling special meetings to approve this. My concern here is not just that we are considering potentially spending $20,000 to a vendor to do a concept plan, but that this is essentially delegating authority to the mayor to make decisions outside of the purview of the board and outside of the purview of the, and outside of the input of the public. We, in one of the questions, in terms of the RFP that we got from the vendor, they said that they, they were asking, well, you know, who do we have authority to meet with if we have questions about this? And the answer was that it was the mayor and certain village staff. They specifically said that there would be very little time to meet with the board. And actually, in their response, they have said that because of tight timelines, there's noted that there's really little time to have a public meeting, to have public meetings. So this is what we're telling the vendor here. So essentially, what I'm seeing is that the board is being asked not only to spend $20,000 for design services in the most prominent part of the village, but that we're looking to delegate an enormous amount of control and discretionary authority to the mayor in crucial planning tasks. And I think that it would really be a misstep to go ahead with this. I think that this was alluded to in the last public meeting with John Steinmetz, with a planner, who said that this is really an aggressive timeline. Instead, we can take a step back here. We can get input from the planning board, from the historic preservation board. We can do some concept planning in front of the public to involve them in this. You know, I wanted to mention that in terms of the comprehensive plan, which we provided the planner, we've got 15 bullet points for things that we want in this area, and nine of those say that we should consider this. Who should be considering this? I think that in terms of the planning that we're doing here, it is not the board and not the other appointed boards and the public who are considering this. But we're essentially saying that the mayor should consider this concept plan with the consultant. And to me, this is just inappropriate. There's a false sense of urgency that's being constructed around this.
Can you kind of wrap it up a little bit because we have other people waiting to talk?
Sure. My summary is that this is inappropriate at this time, and I am not in support of approving this funding for the application by an external firm.
Okay, thank you so much for your comment. Renee, you have your hand up.
I think I was up.
Yes, please let me finish my sentence. Please let me finish my sentence. I'm just saying Renee had her hand up. Dan is next, followed by Renee. Dan, please.
Okay. I, for one, want to make sure that we take advantage of our village. This is at least the fourth public meeting that I can think of that we have discussed this at. This has been entirely transparent. The accusations that, quote, that we're granting special control and discretionary authority to the mayor is outrageous and based on nothing. It's the kind of thing that really riles people up, but it's not actually based on anything. We're going to vote on this. The mayor has had no excessive power or authority. I think it's, I think this is utter nonsense. I really want to improve the village. That's all this is about. We've done so in a public manner. I'm really excited for the group that put forward a response to the RFP, and I hope we can vote on this.
Okay, thank you, Dan. Yes, Renee?
So the first question, the deadline is very short to apply for the grant. And when is our next opportunity to apply for the same grant? Would be a year from now, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
It happens once a year.
Okay. And how extensive are the needs of the grant? This was a little heavier than I anticipated with the planning and concepts. So they do need concepts when we're applying for this grant. And they do need pretty, it sounds like, pretty thorough design renderings?
Actually, that's actually not as accurate. Really what they need is a design to be sent in. The design certainly can be changed at any point in time, but it is essentially for anybody going, you know, and I spoke with many other villages going for LWRP funding as well. Anybody going for the grant, you at least have to give sort of a conceptual design, and it can be altered, you know, prior to implementing it. You can go back and redesign. You can add. You can, you know, nothing is cast in concrete. The intention for anybody applying for this grant, any municipality or entity applying for this grant, is to submit the conceptual design to get that initial funding, and then you really refine it. And that's, you know, you continue as a community to work on that.
And have other communities who have applied to this grant had charrettes and community involvement before even applying for the grant?
Yes. Most of them did what we did, and the charrettes were done, and it was included in the comprehensive plan. I would like to say, and I know Scott is probably ready to chime in and possibly Zach, that based on the last public meeting and transparent meeting that we had as a board, when we all agreed to do this, that it was very much given a very specific scope regarding the heavily enroded portion of our embankment along the canal path. And that was the piece that we would be looking at to enhance and improve that canal path once the Canal Corp engineers come through, which hopefully will be this month. That's what we've been told. So it is a very specific component, whether or not there is any other larger piece involved. That's what this board decided and voted on in public and transparently. So this is about the improvement to the canal path. And if anybody has a different understanding, please share that. I also would like any board member to raise their hand in terms of, maybe I have forgotten that anybody else on this board maybe stepped up to take a look at other consultants or look at any other projects or any other improvements along the waterfront. If so, please raise your hand so we can recognize that. I didn't think so. So because, thank you. Yes, Dan. Well, yeah, you came along, you know, you were on, yeah.
Yeah.
Just because, as mayor, I said, hey, we need to take a look at this. This isn't about me taking control. This is about me bringing something to our board because we have had erosion along this canal path for, Zach, how many years has this erosion been going on? Oh, you're muted, Zach.
Yeah, we've been, we've been working around it for years.
For years, for a number of years. So nothing has been done. It continues to erode, and this is an opportunity for our village to invest in our village. And I agree with Dan's comments. We are investing in our village. And I think it's $20,000 that we're not spending on legal fees, that we're spending on something that will actually improve Shane Place and our village. This is a good thing and a really positive project. Yes, Justin?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment on two things briefly. Number one, the erosion that is occurring and the Canal Corporation work that's being done to secure the embankment. I feel like this project is being pushed through with an excessive sense of urgency because it's being inappropriately tied to that maintenance work. We have two different things. We have the work that needs to be done to control the erosion, and we've got larger-scale conceptual plans and big changes that need to be made at some point to Shane Place, as discussed in the comprehensive plan. The more responsible thing to me would be to decouple those two things and to consider them separately. I think that the, you know, I appreciate the fact that we are pushing this through, but I really want to ensure that, you know, this is brought in front of the public. The issue of refinements that were discussed here, so we can make a plan and make refinements. This was actually referred to in the answers to the firm when they asked questions during the RFP. And we said, "The concept plan is intended to provide a basis from which the grant can be secured, leading to further design refinements." So the thing that I want to emphasize here is that we are being pushed down a path where the big changes are being assumed or able to be assumed. And then by the time this is brought back in front of the other boards and the public, they will just be refinements. And to me, that takes a lot of decision-making ability away from the public and from those boards, which is very problematic.
I appreciate that comment. It's a canal path. And we're working with the Canal Corporation. They own it. They own it. So the public has had input all along the way regarding our comprehensive plan. I was part of that. I was on the steering committee. This is an opportunity based on the fact that we finally are able to, at some point this summer, stop the erosion and take advantage of funding that's available. Otherwise, we wait another year, and then there's another year out, you know? I think this is a wonderful opportunity. I don't see this as being irresponsible or negative. I think it's a tremendous opportunity for us to kind of get in and get a piece of this in place and, of course, work with the public and refine the design as we go forward. It's nothing more than that. I think this will be money well spent on behalf of our community.
Hi, can I talk?
Yes.
Okay, I'll make a motion to accept the RFP I submitted. Looking for the name, I always forget the name of this company.
Oh, Trailbridge?
Yeah.
You mean the Trailbridge Associates?
TWLA and Fisher Associates.
Yeah.
In an effort to improve the quality of life in the village.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second and then open to discussion.
Okay, let's bring it back for discussion. Yeah, Renee?
I'm super torn on this because I know how important this is, and I know the short timeline. I have no doubt that this is a good thing, as Mayor Plummer said. We've had erosion problems. And we're working with the Canal Corporation to try to remediate some of that. My concern, I have no concerns about this firm either. They're very good. I mean, they worked in Fairport. It's a fantastic firm.
Very quickly, they also designed one of our pavilions along the waterfront. They've done work for the village.
They have done work for us. So my only, my only concern is that I'm uncomfortable, given the short timeline. We have this out for two weeks over a holiday period. And also, there's a super short timeline for them to do the work, which might not have appealed to a lot of firms. A lot of, I mean, I don't, I don't know how many of them would have applied, and I have no idea because we only received one bid, whether 20, 20 grand is a fair value for this work. And I do know that it sets us behind a year. I recognize that. So I'm super torn on this. My concerns are this short timeline because I think we probably didn't get more firms. And we also, it was only out there for, you know, two weeks.
I'd like, I'd like Scott harder to weigh in on that. Scott, Scott has, you know, tremendous depth of experience in this field and has been working with us. Scott, would you just talk about, you know, responses and the environment? And the timeline's short, no matter what, for this, for this particular grant. It's only been out just a few weeks. So that's the nature of this, of the grant cycle itself. So everybody's sort of up against this as well. Scott, could you just speak to that about one firm responding and? Did you unmute?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, now we can. Thank you.
Well, you know, I think that was my initial reaction when I saw one.
Could you speak a little lot more loudly? I don't, I don't know. Everybody can hear you.
That was my reaction kind of as well when we only had one response, and I thought, geez, that's not what I had hoped for. But then I started taking a look at the other respondents and how they came in. And also taking a look at some of the other actions that we've taken recently with our term contract and our Rand Creek project and seeing how few people are really responding, even though we give them, we gave those other individuals more time to respond. It still came down to the wire, and we still ended up getting, you know, one bidder for the term contract, even though we bid it twice. And then we got two for the other one. So I, I think, as I had shared in an email, the market out there is really hot right now, and there's a lot of work available. And I think whether you had two weeks or two months, I'm not sure under this unique market condition that you would get much better a reply in terms of additional firms participating. It was just, it's, it's something that I've never seen before.
Scott, just really quickly, to be clear, when you were talking about, I'm assuming you're talking about the Sutherland Bridge for the bid for the relining?
Yes, for the term contract, yes.
Yes, and so just to remind the board, you know, that went out, and that was out for what, how long a duration?
Well, we had that out for at least a couple of months, I'm told. But, you know, being a consultant and being in the consultant industry and having responded to RFPs as I've done in the past, you know, I'm pretty aware of how the market is functioning now because I'm doing the same thing, not in this particular field necessarily, but in other fields. And I think another item, I think, for the board to consider is that hourly rates and lump sum fees do not seem to be declining. If anything, they're going in the other direction. We know we're in an inflationary period, like the term contract that we had recently. I think this affords the village the ability to lock into some hourly rates with a qualified consultant, as I see it, and not have to do this again in terms of putting out another RFP and maybe not seeing an improved result, maybe seeing higher hourly rates, maybe seeing a higher lump sum fee. I wanted to just comment on the goal of the project and the concept sketch plan, which is just a graphical plan to go along with the application to the state. It doesn't have to be a final plan by any stretch of the imagination. Design projects that I've worked on with landscape architects, planners, and everyone, you know, we have at least three phases of a project: concept sketch, preliminary design, and final design. There is, it's not over till it's over in terms of the design. So if there is an acceleration of this, which there is, it's not going to exclude the public or anyone from this board or anyone with any interest as a village resident, as I see it, from commenting on what the final product will be. It's, it's, it's an ante, so to speak, to get your foot in the door, as I see it, to qualify for some funds that you can then use as you proceed further on down the road. And this is also just affecting what's identified as Zone Four in the comprehensive plan, which adjoins Zone Five, which is a much larger aspect of things. I think from my perspective, it gives you a chance to get a little momentum towards Zone Five and maybe work out some of the kinks in approaching Zone Five because that's a big challenge comparatively. So that's how I see it. And the one other thing I wanted to mention in listening to the criticisms is that if people criticizing the work that we did would thoroughly read all 56 pages of would thoroughly read all fifty-six pages of that which Dorothea sent me, that comprises the entire RFP and the correspondence with the consultants, I think you will see that we tried to create a very transparent process and a very fair process. And quite honestly, I'm offended by the comments that came forward regarding those criticisms because if anything, we've been over double backwards to give you the fairest approach to achieving your goal that we possibly could.
Thank you, Scott.
Thanks, Scott.
And yeah, yes, Lily, you had your hand up first and then Dan.
No, I had my hand up. I absolutely had my hand up before Lily. Thank you. I'm gonna go. So there's something very strange happening with Zoom right now, which is that we're getting chats from Lily Lanfair.
And it's not me.
And it's not her. So somebody is in. So can you please remove the other person? Who's, it's the one with the hand raised.
Look at that.
So somebody's in as Lily, so they're in as a panelist, okay? And inappropriately using Zoom as someone else in a public meeting. I think that's horrible. Two, I'm offended as well, Scott. I'm in full agreement. The other thing, and just this point has not been raised. One of the reasons I'm excited about this is that we have no guarantee that grant money will be there a year from now. We have a guarantee that grant money is there right now, and I want to capitalize on it. I also want to remind everybody, this is a firm that has done great work for us and great work for our neighbors, and you just have to walk around and look at it, and it's in terrific shape. So I'm very much in favor of moving aggressively. And the last thing is that, you know, there's no ideal scenario that we can get this done. So now we're going to execute well. You know, spending another year on it, we don't even know if there will be grant funds in a year. We may lose this opportunity. It may cost us more money. So I'm very much in favor of doing what we can as a governing body to improve the lives of our villagers.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second roll call. Oh, I'm sorry, Lily, you had your hand up. I'm sorry. Yep, Lily and then we'll do that.
Yes, thank you very much. I would, first of all, I would like to, if it's at all possible, for Dorothea to discover who is logging in as me and who is, you know, and who's commenting as me. That'd be very important to me. The second point I would like to make also is that I have absolutely no concerns regarding the professional expertise and performance of this, of this Thomas Wolfe Associates. None. That is not the issue. For me, the issue was the shortened runway. And I think I said that from the very beginning. The third thing I'd like to say is, I would like to know definitively from the person who has the information, if we didn't, if for some reason we were not to make this grant application, does that preclude us making the repairs from the Canal Corporation along the canal? Does that, is there some reason why we wouldn't proceed with that?
Why, so why wouldn't, so we would have to pay for that ourselves?
We don't want to pay for those repairs. Canal Corporation engineers will be coming in, hopefully with over the next two weeks to start it. It has been deferred twice now, I think, Zach. Am I correct? Twice in terms of when they're coming in because they have had other higher priority repairs along the canal. So this is an opportunity for us to have the, that run of the embankment that's fenced off for safety purposes repaired by the Canal Corp engineers and not at our expense. At the expense of the village, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you. I wanted to be clear on that.
Okay, yep.
Wait, okay.
Yeah, Renee?
To clarify Lily's question, we can still, the Canal Corporation is still responsible on, to cover the cost of the repair of that, or you're saying without this grant, we won't be able to do?
The Canal Corporation is going to repair it.
Okay.
They're going to repair it, yes.
So this would be for addition, any additional work that might be combined with that. So this won't, if we don't get this grant or we don't approve this?
Let's put it differently. We can't, we could not proceed with repairing or doing any project along the canal path if we want to say expand it or take a look at making a wider promenade, you know, something like that without the repair to the embankment. And if we wanted to do so, we would then probably have to incur the the cost of repairing the embankment. Zach?
So to answer your question, Renee?
The Canal Corp is going to be making the repairs to the bank because it is their responsibility, but the repairs that they are making are just enough to kind of ease the situation as it is so we can get rid of that wooden rail and to reinforce the asphalt that is there that is still crumbling. I believe what we are attempting to do is to make it similar to how the area of the bank is down by Jambetat and Lock Thirty-Two, which would shore the bank up a lot more secure. What the Canal Corp is going to be doing is more or less a quick fix in order to limit this law.
Okay, that answers my question. Thank you.
I'm sorry about that. Yeah, maybe I wasn't clear because that's as far as they will go. But say, say the erosion problem existed and the Canal Corp was not going to come in to repair it. If we wanted to do just what Zach described, you know, maybe extend that promenade similar to where it is by Jambetat, we wouldn't be able to do it because the embankment is so compromised. So the opportunity for us is now that the embankment is repaired, regardless, we can go ahead now with any other improvements for our community on Shane Place.
Yeah. I'm sorry to make this go even longer, but if we were to approve this, this, we, we, the work would be to apply for the grant. And then if we do get the grant, that is when the public charrettes, the real community vision would be completed. And we could either, we would, we can choose to put another RFP out, or as Scott said, we could do that on an hourly basis if we chose to. But if we wanted to get super laser focused on making sure we didn't miss this opportunity to apply for this grant, we would go with this vendor to apply for the grant. And then if we get the grant, then we have another decision point, opening an RFP up perhaps again.
Well, that, yeah, and Scott, you can chime in again, but I believe you, your words were that the acceleration of this particular process, I mean, the timeframe for this particular grant, in no way, in no way excludes any board comments or public comments as we go forward and refine the project if we get the funding. Am I correct, Scott, in what I just said?
Yeah, that's correct. And what I recommend is that if you choose to contract with this consultant, that we build a provision in that contract that enables the contract to be extended using the hourly rates or you know, a negotiated lump sum fee based on that. So that if you're satisfied with this consultant and you want them to keep going, you have the ability to renew and extend their contract. And by the same token, I think I mentioned this in an email, if for some reason you don't like their work and you don't think they performed well, you can put out another RFP.
There's inherent flexibility with this process and, you know, I would just like to go on record saying that in no way, shape, or form, and I say this personally and also as your mayor, would I ever think of excluding the public at all or the board from this process. And I am personally offended by those inferences that were made earlier in the meeting, and I want to go on record saying that. And normally I don't say anything, but that one stuck. Yes, Justin?
I appreciate those comments. At a meeting at noon during the weekday, a lot of the public is not able to attend. Despite what is being said here, what it says in our answers to the vendor is that the grant can be secured, leading to further design refinements. So to provide my own answer to trustee Stetser's questions a moment ago, they would not be true charrettes based on reading these answers because the charrettes would be based on bigger ideas, and what we are allowed to do from this point on are refinements. So my understanding is still different. Thank you very much. I'm happy to proceed to the vote.
Okay, thank you. All right.
I have the, I'm sorry.
Yes, Renee?
Scott's interpretation would be helpful here of the bid we did receive to trustee Lightke's point about the language around refinement versus could we come up entirely with a new concept should we get the grant? Does this bid allow for that? I'm sorry.
I would say so. I mean, I think to zero in on one word out of the fifty-six pages that we generated is pretty picky. That being said, I think you can put in refinements. Refinement would seem to be kind of a broad word to me. So if I want to dive into the definition of the word refinement, I might think that a charrette is part of a refinement. I, the intention of putting this out there, and I think Trailbridge got it, and they have replied with their methodology that they got it. I think they understand exactly what we're trying to do. And if a charrette is needed at some particular point, I would agree that it tends to happen earlier on, but it's not excluded by any stretch of the imagination.
This is a planning study. Okay.
Right.
Okay, we have a motion and we have a second. Thank you, Scott, for helping out with that.
Thanks, Scott. Appreciate it.
Roll call, please. Oh, you're muted, Dorothea.
Trustee Stetser?
Aye.
Trustee Lightke?
No.
Trustee Keating?
Aye.
Trustee Lanfair?
No.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, before we adjourn trustees, we're gonna apply it, and that's in a Zoom that I sent a link to today. It's the same Zoom on both of those. So if you don't have the right one. So it's a different Zoom than this one. It's in your email. And we'll see you there in a few minutes. I'll get Jeff on the line.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Sir, a second.
Lanfair, second.
Roll call.
Trustee Stetser?
Aye.
Trustee Lightke?
Aye.
Trustee Keating?
Aye.
Trustee Lanfair?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Lily, if you can give me a call later this afternoon, I'd like to discuss the situation that happened.
It's quite clear who the person was. So somebody's got a phone or a computer that was used last.
Are we still recording?
Yes, I'm stopping right now.
Okay.